Workshop to order, we have roll call please.
Mr. Trader.
Here.
Mr. Jeff Senior.
Here.
Mr. Hanson.
Here.
Mr. Gallagher.
Here.
Mrs. King.
Here.
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 Very good, so the purpose of tonight's meeting is for the council to get information about the senior center trailhead project as well as provide input to our architect from MSA. Adam, would you like to go over the agenda?
Yep, so in front of you here, we have an agenda to kind of talk about specifics. Carter from MSA is here, he can introduce himself again if you'd like, kind of give his role in the process if you'd like.
Yep, sure. I met a lot of you, I think at a previous meeting, we were talking about the project and we left that meeting with the expectation to get started with this session where right now that have a chance to talk about the project in very detail. So since we had the kickoff, we had the opportunity to do some staff level meetings to kind of talk about the project, we had a chance to get the survey done, the site survey was done on the site, so we have some better information on the site because of course part of the consideration is us, it's in the park. And what we have before you here tonight is some very information with some power sense then just to help this discussion. Everything you see here is nothing, though it looks all hard lined and modeled and everything, it's just the beginning, it's just kind of here to foster the conversation and get more feedback and so it's all possible to change, but look forward to having this discussion.
Yeah, so thanks, the agenda is set, it's meant to be a conversation with the council, there's really, you know, this agenda here, but it's rather informal, we want there to be dialogue and input from the council, this is a time just for the council to provide feedback. Thank you all and the public for attending, certainly you can view and listen, we will have future sessions with public input, but this is really a time for the council to look at this and provide feedback directly from those who have authorized the project to move forward. To the council too, there's food in the back, I know we have a meeting after this at seven, so hopefully it won't be that long of a night, but thank you all for coming, so there is making time, so there is food in the back. So we'll get into it, the general agenda here, just the city overview of what's happening here. I obviously have sort of inherited the project as city administrator and only being here the last three months or so, but if we want to move down to the first slide, the, you know, obviously, we are building a senior center there and the trailhead facility. The general idea was to place this in Murray Park, that's been designated location and discussed. Main motivation there too is to tie in the Maskutun Valley Trail and have the trailhead facility. To date, this whole thing spawned sort of from a $500,000 gift from the city, from the Mitchell family, there's also a $552,000 CDPG close grant that was awarded and accepted by the city in March. In addition to that, we did receive in the last two weeks a $100,000 donation anonymously to go toward the project, no strings attached, just $100,000. So right now, as we sit, we have 1.152 million dollars in the bank to do the project, okay? We are still accepting donations, so if you know of anybody or you have any ideas there, certainly fundraising and donations are a big part of this and will help tremendously as we kind of go through this, we'll talk about money and dollars, but we, just for the public out there watching, we are still accepting donations and if anybody out there is interested in donating, contact the city. We did apply for the stewardship grant application, obvious, in, obviously in prior conversations with the council, that doesn't complicate things other than timelines, okay? We're waiting to hear if that money comes in, okay? So we've applied for that, we hope to hear about that part of it in the next few months, but it's sort of full steam ahead. Part of the funding structure on this in the past was pledging savings from doing the Vermont Parkway or Vermont Street Parkway Terrace project. So kind of a capital improvement project that got funded by grants, kind of kicking in $525,000 which was to make this a 1.5 million dollar project, so that was talked about in the past, we'll get into that a little bit tonight, but full funding is yet to be determined because, you know, we don't know until we bid it out, but we have a decent idea which we will talk about. MSA has kind of taken the lead on this project, they were here about a month, month and a half ago, authorized them to kind of begin this phase of schematic design, they will be the architect on the project, they will do grant management as well as construction management. The location obviously is Murray Park, that has been discussed multiple areas at the kickoff meeting, there were three primary spots identified with one preferred location from the kickoff meeting, the kickoff meeting included myself, the mayor, Noreen, and Mike. So with Carter talking about some of just the big, bigger picture issues, so location obviously is one of those, so we looked at three locations, we'll talk about that later. Terms of the grant, where we are with it all, we have accepted the CDPG grant, we need to start in 2021, there's no question about that, so we will use like forced labor or basically Mike and his crew to start clearing trees in 2021, we need to do that, that needs to be met, and we are finalizing the grant agreement now with the Department of Administration. That is kind of everything that I have as a backdrop to everything without getting into what we're going to talk about the next.
Can you save the funding summary discussion for there?
Yep, we can save that for later.
Shows up again. Relative just overall process that the project's on, as Adam mentioned, CDPG has an expectation because of their CDPG close money, they actually have a pretty small window when they want to accept the money and implement the project. So it's closely completed by in 2022, which in construction terms, that's a pretty quick turnaround from where we're sitting here today. So the schedule, tened schedule as the project, if the project proceeds to achieve, basically would be to, after this meeting, we continue on the development of the project and the design and the details in a schematic design level for the portion that we've been approved to proceed with, with the idea that we finish that up in July and then we, in August would be the chance to gain city, final city approval to proceed with the project, the additional services necessary to be the final engineering and design. And ultimately, as was already mentioned, starting some site work this fall, assuming that's going to be site repertory work and probably a groundbreaking event to signify the start of the efforts. The idea is to bid the project out in January as an appropriate timeframe, to bid a project out kind of years after the holiday season and getting, you know, 2022 rates on materials and you have contractors attention trying to fill their docket for coming here. And with that, ultimately getting the contractor under contract and by March and actually completing the project in 2022. If there's any questions or comments about that tened schedule, it's not paper detail, it's a big question. Hearing that, first kind of part of the conversation tonight was just, we wanted to make sure that the council had a chance to kind of really kind of share their thought and vision for the project. A little bit of backdrop to the nature of this project is there's a certain amount of funding going towards the facility and you have an existing senior center obviously right now. And the idea is as we've done analysis and ensure this, we'll go into more detail later, just to think about after the conversation, as far as, you know, the ideal senior center that was planning for, you know, 25 years from now and so on and so forth, can really look way in the future, it'd probably be much bigger than what we're talking about here tonight. So the facility we're talking about tonight is similar to a side jam house, where there are better appointments and it's based on the budget of which they have, yeah, based on the point use scenario that's been described, with the idea of the facility to wait scan, so to be after plan for expansion as needed. So with that, as far as relative to what do you see as, you know, what's going to make this project get successful when it's all done? And there's always some general basic ones like grant compliance, you know, fiscal and reading budget and having needs and functions of the senior center, you know, as kind of baseline, but any other things come to mind about when it's all done, you step back and look at any key points? I mean, it could be challenges for us as well, you know, keys to success or challenges to overcome. Thoughts?
Have we looked at this, I think we're going to need to look at this as a multi-paced facility because I don't think we're going to be able to build what we, 25 years from now, we're going to need as far as size and those type of things with the money that we have. I mean, we have to be realistic in that, so we have to have it in our minds that this is going to be expandable based on need or opportunity in the future and be mindful of that as things progress forward because we're all getting older and they're going to need senior center. Speaking for myself only of course.
Thank you.
I think for me, you know, this is a senior center and so to make sure that our seniors feel as though they have really input and ownership over this, so a big part of when you said when we step back and take a look at the success, what will that mean? For me, it will be that seniors in our community were engaged and that they know that they were, you know, from the beginning part of the plans and that some of the things that they hope to see, of course, are able to be implemented and so that they know that this is a place that they can call their own.
Well, we also have to be very mindful, this is a trailhead facility. It's not just a senior center, it's a trailhead facility. You like, you know, if we get that grant from the DNR, that's going to come into play because that's money and some of this needs to be designated for those operations too. That was one of the linchpins moving forward, correct, Carter?
Correct. It's a, really a lot of that depends on if we, if we get that grant or not.
Yes and no, so I mean, there's, we'll talk a little bit about that, I think, you know, whether the grant comes into play or it doesn't, obviously the grant allows us to do more, but the overall cost and scope, it doesn't necessarily change much whether we have the grant or not.
Some examples of that. Obviously the trail improvements wouldn't happen unless you get the grant, and then the question is just what, what do you implement in the building today without the grant? Do you still keep the exterior restrooms in case you need those in the future, might sense the building into the core design? And then the biggest other thing might be you consider the covered area that's adjacent to that, you know, that potentially could be an alternative, you know, but, you know, so that, basically the building components of the trailhead are fairly limited and a majority of the grant is for the trail system itself, but it is actually benefiting the cost of building too because you can take those, the small portion of it that is trailhead and you can proportion it into the overall facility, so a certain amount of parking lot, a certain amount of restrooms, a certain amount of mechanical systems can all be a portion to it, so you're financially better off if you should have put the entire grant.
Yep.
Big question I have is, most of the concerns I'm getting from folks are where is it going to be located? So they're concerned you're going to be tearing up basketball courts, putting it in front of the homes and so that's pretty much the biggest thing I get is location, so if we could sooner than later get that out there, that would be good.
Yeah, that'd be part of tonight's discussion, so we have a lot of good information to cover in that, but annoyance priorities important to know as well, so.
Topics I had to start, obviously cost, obviously I care about budget, size, scope, multi-use versus just senior center. This originally was proposed as an idea, the concept was that it would be able to be used by multiple facets of our community, not just the senior center, because those funds could be used for the betterment of everyone versus one demographic, we're trying to gain for our buck using the senior center to leverage the CDPG funds. There have been talk of storage, there have been talk of multi-use rooms, things like that. Location, I had another big thing tonight, the overall project design, the possible expansions and for future, I think, possibly that contract we talked about would be the overage and the cost overruns and what would be contracted versus our responsibility. But a lot of building things right now, it's almost an in-person building versus the contractor to suck up those additional costs. So if we're contracting at 1.2, we're all in a 1.2, any overruns or any cost expansions in 2022 would be on the contract and not on us, so the fine print in the contract.
Okay, okay.
Because, you know, if you talk another 10%, 20%, you know, increase in those costs next year, we're at a million, you're at 1.1 or 1.2, we're at 1.5, you know, we look at, you know, 200,000 extra dollars, that's, that's big in the scope of this project. So that would like, and probably go back to the budget and all the cost of it.
Yep, important topics and definitely construction wise, relative to contracting and how you bid it out and how you make them obligated to absorb changes in cost that might come in the market and yes, that's what, you know, in public works projects, they're obligated to do, it's harder these times, we are seeing optimism and some stability starting to take place in some of the things that have been going on in place, sharing wise, but there's still a lot of uncertainties out there, so.
The only other one I had too was cost down the road, what's upkeep cost, maintenance cost, future, not only expansion cost, if we were going to expand it, but there is a cost of running it, what, where does that come from, where does that fit into our current budget and how can we afford the building if we do that? That's all I had.
When we did accept the Mitchell grant and that, part of that discussion was setting aside a certain amount of that for future ratings and that, so let's not forget that aspect of it, not all that donation is going for, that there has to be a percentage put aside, and I can't remember what Mr. Trader suggested, $50 or something like that.
I thought it was in that 50.
Has to be put aside for future meetings, so we need to remember that.
And the future, the offset of Vermont Street and the other things that were going to be used for other things in the park, not just for this project. Things were vetoed and things were happened with the concept of we could use this fund for banks for our buck, for the CDPG, therefore the other monies, we could use other places in the park, not only for this project. I'm looking grand scheme again, what can we get for an entire facility of the park, not just the building, I'm thinking bigger schemes than just this building.
At what point do we, are we presented with perhaps what senior centers look at in other communities so that we can get ideas from them or also hearing from our, perhaps our senior center director as far as what the wishlist is for, and even doing, maybe this is what's happening now, you know, looking at what our resources are in the community, for example, if a commercial kitchen in the facility would be helpful, you know, when do we look at, well, what, where is another commercial kitchen in our community and, you know, what would be the cost of something like that, would that be utilized with the senior center, you know, ideas like that, are we at that stage now where you go out and make money or are you presenting that to Melly as far as things that have been shared with you to include?
We've had some conversations on that, part of it frankly is, is a backdrop on this relative to a budget constraint, you know, so as far as some of the planning, we look at that next, some planning programming call, we look at the expanded facility versus what we're building today and thinking about it. As far as, as more brainstorming in that regard, you know, the enhancements, we've been having, calling it that in our conversations so far, you're gonna, after, you know, moving forward, we're going to be visiting some of those things and realizing, you know, what we can and even though there's maybe some budgetary constraints, the idea of trying to leverage those and plan for those and incorporate what we can, you know, so we're doing it smart, it's been the idea, but, so, so we have some of this unpacked tonight, but there's definitely going to be some more that's going to take place following tonight's discussion. If there's no other comments, I can share a little bit about the programming study that we did relative to and see this.
Make it bigger. Sorry. I can't see that.
I'm using different software than mine, so it's not the way it is always.
Or Control+ sometimes works.
That helped a little bit? A little more if you'd like. Basically with this is a summary, we kind of looked at the common areas, which is areas like mechanical spaces, lobby spaces, you know, restrooms, and then we looked at the senior center gathering spaces and then we looked at the trailhead components. And what we did is, is we did an initial look at it that we call modest desire, meaning that the current facility is around 3,000 square feet, so we looked at, you know, the enhancements, if, you know, if you're going to move forward with new facility, kind of what would be a comfortable level to be proceeding with would be the modest desire. So we went through and items we have in there, you know, include two different sized gathering spaces and some small meeting conference room spaces, all that sort of spaces for different sort of activities, we talked about, there's a pool table we have now and, you know, how that could be incorporated and so on and so forth. And ultimately, you know, we, looking at that modest, the desire approach, we came up with about 5,200 square foot facility. Right now, the facility that we're looking at is a 3,600 square foot facility, so that was based on the budget that we have and the donations and other things that, and needed appropriations to, as well, and we'll talk about budget, you know, we can earmark a facility of approximately this size and that's what we can talk about, that's whether we want to take it or not. With that, I mean, the things that we basically aren't including are we're only having one gathering space versus a second gathering space, we kind of aren't having the small meeting conference room for auxiliary activities and maybe a, a we got less table and chair storage space because we don't use as much table and chair storage space. And overall, those are the main really sacrifices that were made from the program to get it down to a size that would, that would sink the budget. And so this is the study that we've done so far in our discussions at staff level of programming and trying to get the facility and understanding ultimate future expansion, about how you're going to incorporate things as you add onto the building someday and put an infrastructure to the law for that expansion and, and obviously that expansion will take place in measure and in scale as the city desires in the future, you know, if you want to expand at that location and the opportunities there. So this is some of the space needs analysis that we did and I, probably there were some questions.
You referenced to the budget, what budget did you use?
The budget that was part of the grant applications, there were budgets both with the CDPG match and with the, and the DNR stewardship, and so those were the benchmark, like the budget that the council's been somewhat aware of, I think, throughout the process. And so we're trying to, we're very budget conscious, we understand the importance of that, and so we're trying to strike that balance between, you know, budget and, and needs and then plan for the future expansion that I think we did to accommodate the needs that we fell off the facility fully, but again, trying to take advantage of the grant money and the other things that we're leveraging to kind of get this phase one part of the facility built. And a little bit of that more detail plus we.
But this was basically for the senior center application, we go 1.5 million, I believe was kind of the basis for just the senior center part and we start looking at trailhead and things like that, we start getting in trailer and start, you know, reaching $2 million. So I think, you know, I'd be fair to say that 5,200 square foot building would be weighing a question with the allotted funds, with the current money allocated and the grant funds, all of that, so.
And we both have a chance to, we'll show you a building design and you can kind of see what fits in that size building, so when you see a number on paper, it's a little arbitrary, and we can circle back to these conversations too as we go through things, but I mean, you can give it a feel for about 3,600 square foot facility or something.
Yeah, question, how does parking factor? Yeah, question. How does parking factor in?
Um, there, there has been, there's a parking lot planned as part of the facility. So it's, it's in this budget.
Okay.
Yeah.
35 to 40 spots.
Okay. And location, obviously.
Yep. The idea is 35, 40 spots. That this is kind of an all in, you know, 2 million is like all encompassing, but it's, we'll talk here.
Has, has some part your allocation cost. It has the soft costs for engineering. It has, it's kind of the all-in budget. So that's how they, they grow beyond just the construction cost and the lead in total. If we can circle back to this.
You just want to go to the budget? I think that is where it should.
You wanted to go to the budget?
Okay. Is that, you just want to go to the budget? Is that, is that where everyone at golf plays? You can't have that all.
Yeah.
So everything else that we'll talk about designs, things like, you know, sign comes back to, you know, ultimately this and, and everything. I mean, and that's just the honest, you know, assessment of everything. So when we're, when we're looking at the overall project cost, the estimate here with proposed A, which is the, the senior center facility, and then trailhead facility, combining that, we're looking at around 1.76 million dollars to build everything that includes, you know, site work, parking lots, all of that. You know, then we have building allowances or budget allowances for furnishings, for other equipment, and then we only have $9,000 in this budget of contingencies. So this is pretty, you know, tight. And that's not probably realistic. We should probably be at around 10 to 20% of overall project costs in the contingency alone. But I think if we find this right, hopefully we can not need that contingency. But it's always, it always needs to be considered particularly in this case where we don't know what material costs may be. And, and there are some of those outlined factors on overall cost. So allowances, we're looking at around 75,000. I mean, Carter and I have talked about that. We talked about it at the kickoff meeting. That can easily be doubled just on, on, you know, furnishings and, you know, everything. So then you get into, you know, designing it and making sure it's all done and grant administration at 225,000. So we're looking at 2 million, just over 2 million dollars. Okay? So. Any questions there? We can go to the next slide. So the next slide, this kind of gives you a breakdown of, you know, how we're funding it, kind of the summary. As we stated earlier, there's the Mitchell grant 500, there's the anonymous donation of 100,000, the CDDG bonus grant for 552. So you're looking at, and I think this is sort of used to, to do the overall budget of the, for the grant applications. I think this number was kind of put in front of you before, 1.5 million. So the city's match at that point was, you know, it's reduced now to 4, 425,000. Uh, if we were to get stewardship, it kind of summarizes the, the split in what the city shares and what the grant share is on that. So it's either going to be 50 or 40%. Uh, that means some, I mean, it's better to get 50, but 40% is still a good number. So once again, we're at that, you know, 2 million, just over 2 million. Okay? So comes down to then approximate city match scenarios when we look at it. If we didn't get the grant and we still wanted to build it with kind of a trailhead, proposed outdoor area, the city's match would be 690,000 dollars. So just shy of 700. Uh, if we got the grant, it's at 50, 50%, it'd be 670,000. If we're 40%, 720,000. So I think in, in past conversations and discussions, the city's match is going to be around 525 and cap it at 1.5 million. With the addition of the trailhead extension, all of that, that has bumped up to around 2 million. And the city's match has, has, has increased then to be greater than that original 500 some thousand. Okay? The grant really gives us, the stewardship grant really gives us the trail to free. That's kind of the advantage of all this, which is very important. Because if not, we are still spending about the same amount to get in identical buildings. So that's where I mentioned before, the grant matters in a sense that we're getting the trail to free. But in terms of an overall, you know, budget, if we want to build this with a trailhead put on it anyway, and the way we're kind of designing it, we're at around the same number, right in the middle with or without the grant. We just don't get the trail without it. So, um, how do we pay for it? You know, the, obviously it's higher. There are different funding scenarios to, to come up with that 700,000. You know, really it comes down to construction financing debt, see what that overall cost is at the end of the day. And either doing, using money for capital improvement planning for future years. That would obviously need to take some decisions, make some decisions on what gets funded in the future and what doesn't, and what this replaces in a capital improvement plan that borrows, you know, annually 7, 500, 700,000 dollars. There is the opportunity to issue new debt. We could look at cash on hand and doing a combination of everything, including rescue plan dollars if need be. But this is the overall budget. I, I can't say that we have a firm commitment on how we are going to, you know, come up with 700,000 dollars. I think there's a good understanding of how we could get there with various funds. And at the end of the day, we don't know what it's going to cost until we actually bid it up and see what the project's going to cost. This could be over, it could be under. And, you know, we hope that it's overestimated, but we, we don't know. So. That is the budget. Any questions? Ken?
So Justin?
Yep, I think it. From, from my perspective on any of everything, I think we can figure this out. I think that it's manageable. I think that there are moving parts along the way that will dictate how we fund this. In, in my preliminary conversation with staff and whatnot, you know, I think that the, the smart play here is to, you know, get construction financing and, and really figure out at the end of the day, when the project's done, how we're gonna pay for it. So we'll have to meet some things. But obviously, you know, we have rescue plan dollars that can contribute to it on top of, you know, other city funds existing and then, you know, debt and capital improvement debt. So, you know, I think we can get there. I, I, you know, I think everybody, and the intention of it was good to try to get to 1.5 million, but when we look at even a minimal building at 3,600 square feet, this is what it costs to, to build and to do this stuff. So. So I understand that it's a lot to digest and it's likely more, but I, I don't think that it's something the city should be afraid of. And quite frankly, when we've already kicked in the CDD money, we have, we have about half of the money in, in the bank. But hopefully more coming in to grant. You know, at the end of the day, we're funding, I don't know what the percentage of it is, because I'm not that good at math, but. A third, thank you, of a project. And that is pretty.
And this building will add value to the community for all the groups, the way it's going to be presented.
And the only component of this saying senior center is a 552,000 dollar grant. Everything else that's coming in is going to be either city funds, donated funds, things of that. So I, you know, I just mentioned that for perspective here because there's a lot of money coming into this project that is not directly related to the senior center portion. Only about a quarter.
The 290 square foot for building Cadillac, Chevy, Chevette?
Uh, Chevy. I mean, it'd be a, you know, it'd be a new Chevy somewhere. You know, and you won't be proud of it, but you know, it's, it's not a, you know.
And that's my fear. And I think I talked to Adam about this the other day is we want to do something nice. We know it's something beautiful for the community, for our senior center, for the trailhead, for, for any other groups that'll use it, multi-use. I have fear of the costs and the monies that we have, what we can actually build and the product. No disrespect to you, but I don't mean it that way. Like, what can we get for our money in today's world? What can we build without putting ourselves in financial jeopardy or we're using up all of our funds to go elsewhere into a one project, hopefully we won't have to use. But with the way this is presented, all of those funds are just into this one building. This one complex, if you will. It's not expanding into the park anywhere. It's not expanding on the ball diamonds. It's not talking about the basketball courts, anything like that. This is only, all those funds, all that kitty's being used up just for this. And that's concerning to me because again, I want an overall project. So. But also I don't want to build something that's not usable and still spend 1.2 million dollars and it's just not, not fitting a need, not, not, not solving a problem. So that concerns me. But I do like the expansion possibilities. But where does that money come from down the road too?
We can come back to this as well. All the stuff stays on the table. But as far as, I can share a little bit about the, you know, some of the discussions about site location and about the nature of what the facility might be like.
Is this being presented in totality then with the trailhead or in parks? Or how's it being presented?
It is being presented as in totality with the trailhead being built on. Because at the end of the day, really, we're spending about the same amount of money. So we might as well, because, you know, we're, being in a park too, having a trailhead, whether it's a trailhead or an outdoor, you know, park shelter, I think it's an important component to consider with the overall project.
And it'll adjust your accessibility needs in that park. And accessible restrooms, you know, so you have accessible restrooms. So a little bit, context, these are just some graphics that were important used to, you know, for the grant applications. But ultimately, the idea of the, the trail extension that would be part of this project is the, is the trail extension in orange. And the idea obviously is to bring it into the park. And that's a matter of where in the park it's typical, so that, that start fully up, that just stays in the park. So ultimately. And zoom in a little bit more, you can kind of see the idea that ultimately it'd be a trail link built to do the, the, the movement that we, that's, there is an easement, they'll say, we need there's an easement. Get a trail across the property there and then bring it to the park and then bring it to, to your, your trail facility. Obviously, long term, you know, there's options to connect this into your, to your north western trail. And some of which I think you almost have some, you know, some properties, easements, if you can access them both, they can get you right there almost fairly comfortably, or you could develop a longer term idea for a trail extension and might go somewhere else. But those really aren't part of this project. Just kind of talking about connectivity between different components. So when it comes to the park itself, you know, there's multiple site options that are all been looked at. And so you can see option, option A is kind of the initial spot we were kind of citing it. It's a nice clearing room during the park. And so we looked at that originally. And we kind of issued, and all the preliminary things that were dumped into grant applications were just that. They were just in the context of grant application and where might it fit the park so we can display it? The, the CDDG folks aren't concerned about where you put it in this park to see it and you have a site for it. But, um, so we looked at option A, option B, kind of moved it over to where the basketball courts were potentially. We're doing the parking lot that's there and kind of putting it on the south side of the site. And then option C is when we got together and we got our survey done and we studied some potential layouts for what was most effective. And what was the balance between not compromising too much of the park space and taking away too much green space in the park? Also a lot for expansion. So we looked at option C. So some simple diagrams of these options. They say, well, they studied, you know, options, option A, kind of put it in the middle of the park. But that actually kind of, you know, holds everything more, the main roads. It offers obviously trail connection to the north, internal, you know, connectivity to the, to the ball diamond complex, trailhead, and then, you know, that, that drag leaves in and out, kind of puts in that wide open area in the middle. It's, it's one concept with the trailhead one end, patio space, that is the trailhead patio. And then some patio space for the seniors. And then the expansion kind of dashed in here, future expansion, potential. That was just concept A. We studied a little bit. Concept B was the one that was a grant application that ultimately looked at, you know, putting it to the south. You know, we, I, I was at a meeting, of course, when the public came, we shared some thoughts about that. But it, it, obviously with this place, you're for park amenities that exist today. But I was, you know, so it is an option to put it there and we, and we bring the trail extension down to it, basically. And then option C is one, you know, we kind of studied in more detail eventually. But, you know, we kind of initially plucked it out on top of the survey. But the idea of this one, this is the one that I'll show you larger, you know, basically. But this idea is to take this and have it out of, you know, black lining the street. Put a light in front of the building, putting a drive-in parking, parking lot. Having the, basically the trailhead at the north end of the facility, expansion at the south and at the west side of the building for future expansion. And then tying into the trail system next there. And obviously considerations of the intersection that would take place once the street gets riding and becomes improved for traffic reasons, there's a construction over there. So we looked at, at these three options, and before I, I can go into a further exploration of options. Concept C, but curious about your thoughts about the three options, if there's, you know, what your feelings are about the preferred options. I can go back to the little diagrams that you said we see.
Which option was easiest to tie into infrastructure? Water, sewer, those type of things?
B and C would be in the closest to the roadways.
Okay.
Not that there's a dramatic difference. You know, you're talking about just the water, you know, sewer lateral and water lateral differences, but you're also less site disturbance as you get closer to the roadways. So B and C.
A and C are right in the middle of our only disc golf course we have in the community that is used a lot. that is used a lot. Plus that was donated by civic organization that's looking at spending their money for upgrades on that course, on that aspect, so... Would be, you lose a basketball court up there, but there are courts over at the school across the road. Tennis court wise, we have fine tennis courts at college, we also have new ones that we built for the high school. That's the only other tennis court in the community, is that one up there. We have an existing parking lot that can be improved to accommodate for all the parking first, losing additional park space. I mean, that is our biggest park in the community, but there isn't much vacant space up there that's not being used right now.
B's going to have the most impact on the people living across the street that really don't want to see a building. They bought, they purchased a properties for a park, not to see a building. C is probably going to be the best as far as you've got an intersection right there, it's going to be easier to get in and out, it's going to have less, it'll have better traffic flow. And the courts should stay, I mean, you could move the golf oar a little bit, just toward A and, you know, just kind of go that to the left.
It does like that whole area.
Yeah.
It goes right down, past Russell Manor there, to the left, cuts over the ball fields, comes up along the roadway, and then cuts right back down the middle, cuts over and comes back up.
Yep. I watch the kids play on that, doing that.
Just sort of way else.
Yeah.
Are we building a slab on grade or are we considering a walkout basement?
It's a slab on grade. I mean, it has frost walls and things, you know, foundations, but it's not, it's a single story, it's not a walkout. The site really isn't already conducive to a walkout. I mean, there's some grading there, but mostly, it depends where we're at, but I guess obviously E is conducive to a walkout. A, there's some subtle fall, and C to the north, in the northwest, there's some fall that, you know, you, you know, we're talking like six feet or something of fall, and maybe you could get a walkout there for sure. It was some engineering and actually raising the elevation up a little bit, to achieve it, but just due to the park, again, in terms of the parameter of the budget, things like that, you know, most cost-effective building would be frost walls and an elevator, you know, and stairs.
I do like the idea of a walkout basement, just with, you have, you've almost doubled your square footage for a lot less cost. I mean, you don't have to finish it right away, but at least you have that, the option of already expanding as a walkout. And I thought somewhere in between that A and C or that area, there is an upgrade to get a walkout, like you say, it could be done.
Yeah, it really falls off a whole lot. I mean, you get it here, a lot, the largest drop office, okay, somehow carved, carved into that somehow, and you've got a walkout there. In general, I'm sure that the strategy of using, you know, building the basement for future use, you know, in work, it was just that what we find in our studies when you're looking at the cost of that basement space, you know, so you're still going to be spending a fair amount of money for the first elevator and the stairs, and just the raw square footage, you know, letting it in without the build out. So I mean, it was a cost impact. I mean, you should take a square footage, you look up here, we have a core right now, and then you basically double the size of it, and then, of course, it only costs about, you know, a hundred dollars a square foot or something to be for that walkout basement, but that adds up. It's happening now. And I'll, I'll do a little, thanks, and a practicalness to it, but it would, the cost balance, I think, is there?
Yeah, those same things, if you do have a walkout basement, you have to have accessible elevator, five hundred, six hundred thousand, you can put the elevator in.
Probably a little less than that, but this is square footage, and you wouldn't, if you kept it as, let's be exact thresholds, if you're using it just for storage and container initially, you probably would just rock in for it and not build it. You know, you're not putting public space down there.
Correct.
It would be the strategy. And then the cost of the elevator itself is about a hundred and twenty-five just for the elevator, put into the shaft and all that construction, you know, so there's, you know, fortune to hundred senior head in there, all waiting to be built. So at that point, there's strategies there, you know, if you wanted to make the building more robustly expandable, that would be the way to, you know, here for that, so just as you expand the building, at least it's going to certainly be more of a park. So as you think about, you know, when you go to expand it someday, decide, you know, Senior Center just stay here and you want to expand it on this site, you know, it's going to, you know, cut out your park space more. Other things we can kind of contain is park settings of all of them, complex, and the multi-purpose use of it, you know, will directly suit that best.
I don't know the code, but for, if you have access, drivable access to the lower level for disability or disabled people, do you still need interior access to go to the first, the upper floor?
If it's the same entity, you know, if it's the same roof, then you'd have to. Public buildings are more stringent, I figure, you'll see that kind of, that strategy used on practice sector work more often. Public's great, Title II, ADA's pretty stringent about if you have that internal route, I mean, if you have that internal square footage, even use a storage sometimes, it's too large, that's around three thousand, you know, that's when it triggers an elevator, you call it, we have a story.
Even with no stair access?
Well, if there's no stair access, then for sure not.
Okay, so that would be an option.
Yeah, that would be an option, but then you're basically talking about parking infrastructure down below and a separate use altogether, they can't be used in use, and that can play into your needs, sort of previous strategy.
Okay.
With regards to location, what Howard brought up about the disc golf course, this sounds like this would be the time to look at how we might redesign the disc golf course so that it is usable. I mean, if the question is, one location makes our course no longer usable for an actual course, or it just means that it needs to be redesigned, it sounds like now's the time to, who do we, do we have a plan for, who do we talk to to look at a redesign?
Lee Cotton and myself are the ones that designed the course.
Say it again.
Lee Cotton and myself are the ones that designed the course years ago, and we were approached by the plans. And so we went through and asked a lot of people, we went to a lot of different courses throughout the area, and we made it out so that poles weren't on top of each other. There was a little bit of space between some and to utilize the green space of the park that we did, but yet still allow a section for like the youth tournaments. The teams on top, like, could come and sit up under the trees and that would allow for space for that to be done.
I just mean...
It looks like a lot of space there, but it really isn't.
Well, I just mean, it's, so I'm grateful to be asked about the location, what I prefer, A, B, or C, but I feel like until we do almost like pros and cons for each one, and we look at, you know, what is the actual feasibility of changing the course and what is the actual cost difference for perhaps utilities, I don't know how to give an educated answer to the location until we really look at, really, I think it should be almost pros and cons for each location.
I think as far as, you know, following up on the disc golf, I'm not very good at sports, so I don't utilize or understand the course as well. But I do see now that regardless of location, out of the three proposed spots, we're looking at removing or disturbing existing outdoor activity space. I know we've heard from, from community members regarding the basketball courts. I know Olivia Kraus from Barlow Park, you know, our basketball courts are always, whether it's basketball or, you know, there's morning fitness classes there six days a week, you know, it's, it's a very highly utilized space. I know Eastover at Barlow Park, so, you know, so I see that as valuable space. However, knowing that, you know, a disc golf course is involved in both of those, you know, is there, what, what's the most realistic financially responsible option to be able to maintain, you know, maximum integrity of that activity space? You know, is, you know, going down to one basketball court or the courts that are at the school, is that something that can really be used by community members throughout? You know, obviously not the winter, but throughout the day of school, that, you know, there are people that use things throughout the day, is that something, giving guys an option during the school day, is that something that's even...
Feasible?
Yeah, or appropriate, you know, appropriate expectation.
Or hopefully, most of the kids that would be using it during the day are in school.
Right, but I'm also thinking other people that utilize court space, like when their kids are dropped off and then...
The basement conversation reminds me of, I believe the current Senior Center is utilized as a severe weather shelter, I believe, for those who don't have basements. Is that still going to be kept for people to be able to use, or do we need to find...
That's fine.
So that would still exist?
Here or there, are you asking here or there?
Well, if it's not going to be here, because it's being taken away, we need to find...
If it would exist here, I mean, if you do something there, you know, would be, yeah, we're talking, you know...
We're not eliminating this space.
No, we're not eliminating.
We can create...
Safe shelter space, I notice.
Yes.
To be, yeah, to be clear, I'm not, I'm not saying that we create one, I just want to make sure we still have one.
Yeah, that's, no problem.
Can I see A, B, C again, just so everybody can kind of look at them again?
Sure.
And now stop, sorry. The paint in front, that is a one parking, like a drive-through, one park or something?
Double loaded, a parking lane, yeah, I mean, it comes, comes in front, parking on both sides.
Okay.
And this one actually developed a service, you know, to around the end to the Senior Center potentially. And very much a concept, you know, just for, for general planning sake, you know, so that, that's the kind of the concept for the parking in there. So it puts all the parking in board. The idea of having, you know, drive-through parking lot is really convenient, you know, to try to get people in there and get there and not have to turn around if it's full or something like that, it's very difficult. So all the schemes implement, you know, a two-drive approach and then tying it to the trail system, similar as well, so...
But with an inherent cost and loss of green space?
Yes.
So again, to join in some of the questions, pros and cons of each one?
Yeah. And it looks, if I'm seeing this correctly, it looks like concept A is really utilizing concept A location for the building, but concept C, space for parking and roadway, right?
Right, there is maintained green spaces to, you know, over here, you know, with concept C up there.
But that would cut into a disc golf course much more significantly than...
That's not really usable either.
Yeah, the space.
Yeah, you're just kind of wasting that space.
B and C then? Kind of give everybody a look again.
Yeah, refresh, and so, so in this scheme, where the building basically goes where the basketball court, tennis courts are now, and the parking lot gets basically replaced with a new one, and maybe expanded slightly if needed, we have to study that closely. And then the Trailhead, of course, it's already a trail system through the park, and so being an improved trail system through the park, you know, to get you over here.
When you and I talked about concept B, with the parking lot, we had discussed that, we would need to expand it a total of ten feet, five foot each way towards the road and then towards the park to accommodate for, I think it's a fifty, fifty cars at that time.
Yeah, and you can make it double loaded, you know, because a park park not single loaded, so the matter is why, I mean, you're...
That's what you were talking about for that there.
There's grass up front there anyway, I know, isn't there?
What's that?
There's grass up there right now, right?
Yeah, there's grass and a few trees there that...
It's offset off the road, yeah.
Yeah, you could remove that and name that there.
Obviously, this one does, you know, it crowds the playground, you know, I mean, it's very literally, you know, very expensive thing, so there is a certain maybe tension there, I was pointing that out from a planning standpoint, you know, the two different uses, ideally these things, you know, you're placing the sport, but that's going to take whatever green space, but...
I couldn't hear what you just said.
Relative to the proximity of this and the playground area, the close proximity of the two, you know, that there's a certain maybe tension there, you know, because of the nature of the user group that's here and the seniors and the children that are here, everything's kind of clustered very close together. Pros and cons, I think, but, and just pointing it out as far as, you know, we walk the site and observe, just to lay the way it's going to look like, I recognize that it's very close to the ground.
Are there more parking spots in this one than in A and C, or is it the same?
They would all be the same, ultimately, the goal is to develop the equal amount of parking. If this just didn't take it that far, you know, to study it in that much detail. So there's not an inherent difference in the parking economy between them to be a deciding factor, because they all kind of support the same thing.
Okay, because I like splitting them just for the traffic, nothing, people can come in there and play tennis, or other people, well, if you put it there, they can't play tennis, but, you know, or anything else, but, and it's crowding everything out. I like the idea of the two parking lots. People bring their kids there to play and they can sit there in the parking lot. And then concept C kind of puts it out there where it's...
That's actually, well, graphically, you see...
Now you still have the two parking lots.
Yeah, and it's kind of a play zone down here, a park, a play zone here, trying to basically create a new zone here for that.
Doesn't really have an impact on people that go across the street either. If you do see and you're utilizing, that way you're utilizing all the green space that we can there too.
And that could show you, you know, of that one, we just ran that one through, you know, our survey room, to show you how it actually potentially works, for third and fourth parking lot. This is rotating out ninety degrees, you know, sorry, but you can see basically the park's rotated ninety degrees, playground over here now, this is a playground, courts, and basically the ball dimes are over here, so it's just going to be ball dimes, and the trail extension comes in, but that's just a, you know, this is the same old development we put on all, and it's a selected option, we just did this for the sake of portraying the potential here.
So in this one, the grade falls off to the right?
Yes.
So one thing to consider or even think about is to have an option where you've got maybe a smaller footprint of this building and just, I mean, we're maxing out our dollars here right now. If we put it on slab, little smaller footprint, and just didn't spend the money that we're looking at here, and in future, actually dig that out and do a walk-in, a walkout basement with a second floor as our second addition, and then you put the bathrooms on the back side for the trail, the outdoor bathrooms.
They're different, you know, and the track kind of laces in, you know, the overall of the trail kind of laces in, due to the trains, it's kind of, you have to be, it's a little spot in here.
Yeah, you'd have to do a little, but I think when you did the addition...
Yeah, and you get, with this end, and have a two-story expansion option as a base of the, which could play into that.
I mean, how much is it really going to get used, what, you know, what does the future hold for? And if we tell how much we're going to use it, and then by putting the addition can be something that we know we're going to have to do.
Is it possible to, I don't know if there's a map, the, I'm really trying to...
Of the disc golf course?
Yeah, that overlay on it?
And I didn't bring it, but I do have...
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you can see here, you can see, I think this is, is this, that's the power, that's a little off on this one, I think this shows the baskets.
Public rules are at the Ritz-Cole Park. How many holes are at the Rigsfield Park course?
Huh?
How many holes are in the disc golf course at Rigsfield Park?
Rigs has eighteen.
So there is another one, not in the city of Ripon limits, but Rigsfield Park does have a disc golf course, yes.
Correct, it starts out by where the old Adams School was.
Correct.
So it's.
So we do have one access to the community, not very far, I'm not saying it's in our community, but we do have one at Rigsfield Park, so if you want to call it a community or not, I'm not sure your term. But there is another golf course.
There is another one out there, it, you have to cross it. A busy road.
I just want to turn it off.
But it's, it's on the eastern side of the park, Rigsfield Park.
Hard, hard to deal with access for bikes and.
Yeah.
And that's, that's a big thing. And it is a long course, so for beginners, intermediate players, it's not a real conducive course, because it's narrow enough. Where this one we set up for beginners and intermediate players.
Guys that drive like it. But it's nice, then they have options, though, because again, different sides of the community, we always talk about that, different parks, different sides of the communities. You know, people on the east side don't have to come all the way to Park, Rigsfield Park, they don't have to go to Park, they do it for Rigs, that's an option.
And how is this used for tournaments?
The disc golf course?
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
They did a tournament the first year that we had it, and then a local park was made over, like, green light, huh? And then they did it over there.
So just a couple of things, in, in the kickoff meeting, Site C was the concept that was preferred from that. We had very similar conversations at that meeting that led us to Site C. In terms of this golf course, I think this provides an area for it to be relocated. The Kiwanis Club has six thousand dollars ready to assist with the improvement and relocation of the disc golf course. And they're waiting to make anything based on, any, any improvements there, based on where this goes. So instead of doing the improvements, spending the money, they have said they will wait till the city decides where it's going to go, and that money will then be allocated for its relocation, moving holes, whatever it needs to keep it there, or even relocate it altogether, they are willing to work with the city either way, in talking to them. In terms of, you know, A, B, C, C was the site that I think the group felt had the most community impact, being that it is across from the school. It allows the rest of the park to remain and have amenities up there that are still very important. And then connect and overlook the ball diamond and kind of be a landing point for that location, where people can have almost a second concession stand, more better bathrooms, because the bathrooms over there, that the existing ball diamond are not satisfactory to what most moms and kids expect nowadays. It allows us to connect trails very easily to the ball diamond and to the cut over, to the other kind of park or the other pathway through there. It expands, you know, the road a little bit, which I think is important when we're looking at that overall area there, because it gets congested as well. So that was the site that was preferred and, and kind of was placed as a, as a kind of concept moving forward. Certainly, any of the sites will work, and, and we, but we sort of need to get on some basis to where it's going to go, because that is very important to the overall planning for NSA. And, but that was preferred for multiple reasons. As I said, multiple, multiple use, what's funny is this location, I think, the group, when we discussed it, was the, the area that benefited the broadest sector of every, you know, of our community, every, you know, it just, it can be a senior center, it can be a sign-up place for baseball, it can be a place for bridal showers and all of that. And, and it has, obviously impacts some things, but those things can be moved and, and allows for greater connectivity throughout the entire park. All the way from this, I don't know if it's the south end, going all the way to the north end, you can, you can basically connect everything. And that, that's just, that was just the discussion.
Is there a reason that the one driveway doesn't come straight out on Sunset?
From a traffic control standpoint, if we institute stop signs in differently, you could potentially do that. You know, my, my engineers is out of the gate, so it can cause a lot of confusion to get in a roadway into a driveway, because that's dangerous as well, and there are people going down the road and the people in the street, I don't know, but. But, but if I implemented stop signs there, a three-way stop there, and every other stop sign, I think that probably would have been, would have achieved. But by all means, it could, it could come up right there as well, that's what we're going to do. It's one of those things that came up and Adam pointed out as well, we left the meeting last time, they haven't signed up. My engineers are saying, you can play there, but it all needs, it's all very preliminary, and he can, he can look at the three, address it and study it, but.
Yeah, truly forcing people to turn right to come out, I mean, plus they go up the other end.
Yeah, I mean, is there going to be a one-way in and one-way out, or?
Yeah, we, yeah, we, that's, this is preliminary, you look, you look all mine on here, but it was just kind of, it's their, both of them. And I made a very kind of display, and, and there's a tension that we sectioned here.
And just to keep you updated, if we have another meeting here at fifteen.
Anything else I know, you know, something that jumps out of all of the, the parking lot, the hardscape is taking up the room, not the building itself. You know, the impact on the park, for me, sorry, that's something I know, I'm kind of visual that way. The building itself isn't a footprint problem, the parking lot really is the footprint problem. I'm not saying we need to move it to the other, to what will it be, I apologize, which is which, but the parking lot is one of the main components of this, because you've got to be able to utilize it. Again, it comes down to if you're going to build something, you have to be able to utilize it. So, you know, again, you have your pluses and minuses, I think, to what you're only incidentally, or is it uses up more green space, but again, it's a used building.
We could work to smooth that a little closer to the road. There's a high spot right there, and some of that would be accommodated without a general wall, but that, that's, it's still your observations totally. Relative to the, the parking, there's a severe parking shortage out there, of course, and they're all very bad anyway. But this is a reuse, so at times it might help the parking shortage, but at other times it might help, but because this might be a poor work. And really, that's kind of, you know, when you ask to try and think about your whole park, you know, this whole, this whole roadway widening it and adding parking lot or something, there's some ways you could, could address that, there's some, just some, some future improvements.
Oh, you might think, and this weekend, handicapped parking spots that would be in there, that would be possibly be able to use versus now where they have, to go much further.
The bathrooms.
Correct, even that, you know, incorporate something for the weekend festivities, you know.
So, last year, we don't need this, all the decisions tonight, obviously, Adam and Clyde have helped a lot, keep things moving, but I could just say, based on time, we could just kind of run through the building, the building layout of it, and get a sense of, you know, what a thirty-six hundred square foot building looks like. And you can see on these plans, you can see a building footprint, that it has a main entry point, you know, right here, senior center, and then a trailhead off to the north in this case. And so if we go to this. And if you can see this, okay, as far as the, that, that plan we're just looking at, so you can see an entry point right here, which is kind of a foyer space, the slash best deal entry position zone, a couple offices, one, the green is senior center space. The yellow is kind of common space, the gray is kind of home, just a four areas. And the orange is trailhead, it's dedicated trailhead facility. And so ultimately, what you get here is you get a front door, there's a senior office, there's this kind of, called a talling office, that can do lots of different things for different uses. Some nature, putting some trailhead information in this area, senior center, literature in this area. And then we, one, a family restroom for the facility that's in this common space, so you can utilize this space all standalone, but this room shut off. The room over here is set up for future expansion, so someday there could be a corridor right through here, that'll lead to your major expansion to the west if you're doing that, and you have access to restrooms. But for now, it's just all one room, so this is all one room here. There's a table layout shown here, that gets you about a hundred and twelve, and that's comfortable, you know, that you could jam a lot of wind there, but we can, to give you a realistic layout, and you can comfortably seat in there at that point, a hundred and twelve. As a support, kitchen, kitchen area, which we could develop as almost an aesthetic feature of the room, just to kind of gain some diversity of space, you know, some storage, of course, for the senior center, table and chair storage, you know, men's and women's restrooms. And then out over here is a recovery area, that you've been seeing already in Clyde, the trailhead, like, it's a kidney shelter area or recovery space, with, you know, separate, two restrooms, they are accessible, family restrooms. So that kind of creates an outdoor space for the seniors out here, dedicated to them uncovered, or this kind of multipurpose space the seniors could certainly use, with the trailhead as well, that has some good use for us and such. I can show you some more, I can just explain.
Question for the bathroom, did you just say that there's a men's and women's indoor and a men's and women's accessible to the outdoor?
Mm-hmm.
So they could be where there's a door on the inside that is locked in the evening, so that there's one men's, one women's, that, you know, when it's being used, the senior center, it's open from the inside, it's locked, but the same, could that be saving?
I've done it, it doesn't work, so I wouldn't recommend it, there's all sorts of security issues you have. So if the seniors are using it, people in the park could be coming into that room, or if you're there using that room, you have outside people coming in. And you have to, we've done it with electronic lock, access switch, so you control it, but it's really, I don't recommend it at all, just because of the security issues between the two. Because you remember, the rest, park restrooms are open, you know, during park hours, and this, the rest of the building is locked down. So there's some, just some control issues, though it seems like a logical way to be more effective with the restrooms in the end. I, I, I against it, but, you know, it's a creative idea, we print every part of it. And I can quickly get you a visualization, I guess, here's on, on the outside again, where it just were. You can now kind of get a feel for that open area, and then, here you can kind of see something, you know, dimensional. And you can see the, you know, the entry point over here, you know, the bike, the trailhead over here. And, and keep in mind the aesthetics and the color selections, all that, you know, that's just, just a phase over. And, and those things can come, but then if you get a view from the north, you can kind of see that senior patio area facing west, and you see the covered trailhead area, the human trailhead facility over here. And you can see kind of, again, you know, trailhead facility to the north, entrance to the senior center here, you know, kind of the trailhead kiosk, you know, bike fix-it station over here. And here is just the senior center entrance. Here's kind of looking more at the trailhead facility, you know, we got that nice side door, that lobby space, so when this is open, that can be open for like literature and such, you got the restrooms, there's, you know, picnic tables. Just another view of that.
Is the, is the kitchen close to that side, or the kitchen was on the opposite side?
It's on the opposite side, so we get deliveries from, you know, the other end of the building.
So, and it doesn't make sense then to get deliveries, but also the kitchen on the same side, so that potentially a festival or concessions could be closer to that?
Somebody could consider that, just that, you know, all the parts and pieces and how they move around, they also want access for like the meal program and things, they deliver things, so they can come in the back door, and it'll kind of allow that for expansion. You know, for concessions, obviously, this would be an outdoor kind of, you know, a temporary concession setup, you know, that they set up. They also could deserve the whole room itself and have concessions in there if you so chose, but that's a mix of use that you have to sort out if you wanted to do that. You know, so you can see the west side kind of facing the park, you can see that open shelter area, and that sort of headspace that gets them as well, and things for the seniors. And kind of that kind of space for the seniors. And this is kind of that, that side door for access for kitchen deliveries on this side, on that east side end. And, and it just kind of moves all of you, of the building from the southeast. And then again, another new kind of, that whole component, so, so that's just kind of, that, the way, what it, what could, might it look like if you're going to do something? What does thirty-six hundred square feet look like? In this case, we tried to develop something that's pretty multi-use, so it's flexible, so it's flex space. But obviously, it has to do its job with the senior center and, and trailhead and, and other things, so. At that edge goes about, you know, you can do multiple things, you can go more, pretty wild, but you can't do them perfectly, if they're just doing one thing, but definitely, there's a lot of options in that, so, so eventually, we'll just summarize it, so I think that was actually the last of the information. And as far as objectives for decision-making, there, I think, were laid out at the beginning. Your consideration budget, safety funding, site selection, and then, I guess, those are the main two things that, that I have direction on. If we proceed to try to make a schedule, we'll, we'll, we'll just grapple with these, these ideas and let us know how we can help.
Yeah, what's the basic frame construction, is it going to be masonry, or is it going to be wood frames?
It's wood frame, wood masonry in there, you know, the nice, you can see, you know, it's basically, it's wood, right now, that, that's what it was for me, that's the wood frame building.
Okay.
Economy of cost versus a, I'm making it that, but well, but that way, masonry, you know, you can run a base for your building, and probably brick, you know, it's very bricks. Parking and closed zone, frankly, you know, it can look nice, but it's masonry.
This design is very similar to the Paul's Bluff Farm apartment that you sent me, that you were going off of?
Yeah.
Did that project ever go through?
No, there's still nothing for that, so you can't go see it yet.
That's what I was kind of questioning.
You know, it basically came out of the staff law meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago. You know, it turned out that just that layout seemed to still be conducive to everything we're trying to do here, and we kind of pulled that out, saying, this seems like it could fit. But at the end of the day, it did really fit very well, and I'll, so a lot for expansion, the way you could subdivide that building room into a smaller room and grow the last of the, more grassy, the, the facility, for the long-term use of the senior center.
Yeah, this, again, this is for reference material, this is not an approved design, I'll do respect for that one. People will see pictures of this, possibly the paper, I can hear them have a picture. This is not an approved design, we haven't said, this is what we're doing, it's for conceptual purposes only, that here's what you could probably do for thirty-six hundred square feet, they have about two million dollars, here's kind of some bank for your money.
Mm-hmm, so you have something, something that you.
But we have a place to start now, so thank you very much for your help tonight.
And I, and I have a copy. Just what you described, you know.
We can get that on a PDF sent though?
Yeah, you can, and if you don't want the paper.
Any more questions or topics for?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
If things moving forward, we stay very dependent, I guess, everything. We will schedule a public input session to sort, to get that in pretty well, I know there's a desire to be back. And then we will be back, maybe in July or so, obviously, we'll talk, we need to make this information, everybody kind of needs to get, to make some, some bigger decisions now, too, because we've got to get this, keep this rolling for the time we have, so. uh, for the time being, so.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
A move.
Okay. Good day, Al, second by Howard, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote, is there adjourned?